All right, good evening. It is six o'clock and in the absence of our President and Vice President, I'll call this meeting to order for the Huttley Community School District 158. Roll call please.
Mr. Gentry.
Here.
Mr. Garin.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mr. Quagliano. Mrs. Melendi.
Here.
Mrs. Walker. Mr. Fleck.
Here.
Let the record show, Mr. Fleck came at 6:01 PM. Give him a moment to get situated. Good. You're here.
Yes, I am. Okay, thank you very much. Sorry I'm late. We did, we're ready to go into closed session, is that correct? I would like to make a motion to go into closed session at 6:02 for the items listed in the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
I think Ms. Melendi got that one in. Roll call please.
Mr. Quagliano. Mr. Fleck.
Here.
Mrs. Melendi.
Yes.
Mr. Garin.
Yes.
Mr. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
And I meant yes. Okay, we are in closed session.
No real big news for that one.
Okay. That's fine. Alright, thanks Doug. Huh? No, they just left. The caravan just headed down.
The weird point was, I need to go. Okay. I need to go. I need to go.
Yeah. There's something about the app. So I keep. I don't know. I don't know. I've seen them. I just have to stash. I put. When I turn up. Director. Allocate. I kind of look back. The reason. Wonder why. What if. I don't know. If you can save. After. You. It's. Second. Focus. Type. Second. Never. Like some special. Ryan. Big. Other. The combination to. Instructional. Technology. Management. Probably. You know. So that could be like a dosing. My God. Don't know what. Is it helping? I'm not like. It's there.
That's probably.
Yeah.
Did he ask you or no? You don't think he will?
No, he won't.
He's gonna respect you?
Yes.
He's gonna respect that look of.
Honestly, I was, my girl's here till like seven last night. Like I just.
Hey. I got her 5:30.
Work is work.
5:30.
Work is work.
5:30.
I know. I emailed him at like six. But I haven't even added for a while, but it's just, yeah, I'm just like, I'm trying to get this guy to. Kind of be a way to manage it better. I don't know what that is, but. Or cut it back. I don't know. Definitely not used to be like, you gotta streamline. Dude. Yeah, but. Chris, I mean, Chris has got the same thing. Like that department just keeps taking on more and more, right?
I mean, you're wrong.
No. I know, I feel like he was really. Like he's. How much you can. I mean, they're working on things I'm not working on. I'm taking out slack.
I finally got a little closer.
But that is.
But I kind of like.
Well, you definitely. Something.
Oh yeah.
So I started to get the first through last year all these folks from the elementary school. Captain had to come to work. So what happened is we decided. What if we decide that.
Yeah, well, I agree.
You know, like.
Because we didn't, in that meeting, we didn't say. Press comes through again. And that doesn't mean so different.
But also doesn't mean that you can go ahead and use hundreds. It doesn't mean you can't, like, just because you want this, doesn't mean you can do this for a society to have. And again, I'm not saying like, you're like, well, if you're actually building funds, you can buy extra things, then you should have them, right?
Well, exactly. Properly, every year, they always expect. And they could have used. They don't. I think I other. They're not buying.
Anna was writing, well, Anna was writing a foundation grant. And I'm like, imparting one of the questions on that foundation grant. She sent me the application.
That's a grant fund.
Yeah. And one of the questions is, why can't we be covered by the district? It's like there aren't any districts funding it. Like. I guess to me, it's not easy to ask that. Like, you're gonna write that. A, you have to ask, but even if the answer is no, like, there's a limit to what districts can fund, right?
Just like.
This is not a CPS school where we're gonna fundraise.
The reason I brought it up was that, you know, we have summer projects. We should have a curriculum. I hate to say that, but. Those things need to be looked at and prioritized. Would you?
Or is not to me, like, is it me that, I mean, see, here are good markets. We want money in order to spend around this stuff. Who am I to say no? I came from a place where we suspended. We froze everybody's salaries for two years and we suspended every single critical purchase for four years until they ever get a little project. And we had a cut. So like, hand cut 20 years. Like, so I come from a place where I just can't look because we don't have money. Like, it doesn't mean we start winding in fundraise and you're just like, oh, when they do, like, will you think? So I'm not saying, yeah, if I have some space in my budget, I'll item for them, but. We're not the time. Right now, to me.
Yeah.
So I guess that's the question. Like, if we say.
How many books did we throw away?
We throw away one, been a long time ago. We don't yet. We need as tons of books as we want to build. And granted, they're not like the perfect. Books. I get a little passionate about which books they need or whatever, but I guess I just feel kind of like, okay, if we say in the industry, we have 300,000 dollars to spend on books, that's how much we're spending on these books. It doesn't mean. If you can find it in your budget, you can buy more. Or if you can fundraise, you can buy more. We have 300,000 dollars that they're giving us. I don't know. Maybe I'm just a bit asking.
Do you still want to give a lot of money to the fund?
Yeah. If Marcus has 20,000 dollars to be budgeted for a heart surgery, he's. Hello, here for the board meeting?
Um, maybe. I have a.
You want to flash?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, you're about half an hour early.
Yeah.
You're the right spot. Yep, we're gonna be coming back out of there soon and by seven o'clock, we'll be ready for the party.
Okay.
Me?
It was the third one.
That was your third choice. Awesome, yeah. And I'm probably, my guess is we're getting to be here and meet with that person. Yeah. Good idea. Also, I just, like, so the district, this is the type of, we just try to run a, a long guy. Things that might be cool, but, but you have to, I. Looking on what, I just, I just, I found another class, I'm going to order the, like, that, that, um.
During the class, we didn't show much stuff on the office. And I'm gonna stand in and I'm like, is up here? Yeah, when I was leaving from here, I would just always sort of do night something like this, and go into the office. And somebody would box stuff all the time, like you get out, you don't want to need it. And I was like, okay, okay, okay.
I was like, I was like, I got that.
I did, I'm like, I'm, I'm, I'm still here. I, I still work here, but still have the work I need to do. Like, I'm still working. So like, well, but you know, I had some time tonight to move in. Yeah, I couldn't find anything, though. We put them in all these different boxes, like, I didn't go. I couldn't find anything. And somebody's like, did Sarah move into your office while you were, like, still dirty, and you know she was doing that? And I was like, I don't know. So, yeah, that's how I remember it. It was like, it was, it wasn't quite dark, it was dark by the time they were done. But for awards, it was cool. We had so a landscaper, um, one of our parents was a landscaper and donated these little, like, landscaping rocks, and they could paint them. We had the Art Class of Paints though. So we had those, those were the awards, and so we rocked it. Painted rocks, and both kids painted the.
That's rock.
Mm-hmm, it was fun. I have one at home, cause I need, Sophia. Well, on the eighth, first, first one. On the number one. That's what matters, is when you're, honestly. Do you know, I was, I was, I shouldn't be honest with you. I, the last time I did that, it was maybe a marathon race, that half marathon, when I was in super good shape, I was kind of qualified for Boston. I think I ran like a one thirty-nine or something. And I got, which was fast for me. And I got done, and we just, like, went home. I was second in my age group in a half marathon, flat running race, cause I didn't even think to stay and check the rewards, cause I, you know, I don't usually.
I wonder if any guys, if they, barely did.
They, they would've if I'd been there. But it didn't even occur to me, like, later on, Mark checked the results, and he's like, you were second in your age group, like, two times. I was, no, I, I, um. No, I'm in, um, Milwaukee, that we, um, I was in high school. Hi, Ms., do you have any board meeting on campus? Yeah, they are in some section, because we have twenty minutes, so you can come on in. Yeah, absolutely. I try to call my mom, but you know, I'm talking about, you know. So you know what, you know, at mile nineteen, we had some stuff, we, we had a relay component. One of the relay buses was sitting at mile nineteen.
You did not finish, you finished.
No, I already finished that race two different times, like, why do I even walk, no, I didn't walk it. It was thirty degrees, I was breathing. So, no, I didn't, I turned around and went down that, got on the, uh, relay bus, I was like, I'm not gonna walk six miles.
Well, you don't walk, you're, holy God, and you run on your heels.
It was bad. Hello, hello, did you pick?
Yeah.
Got it.
I didn't have the bus, and.
And the, if they have any questions, I'll just, I'll just come up.
Thank you, though.
Maybe we can get another question.
Is there any? Well, I'm gonna get that, uh, punctuation column today.
I think I saw that one, I did.
Have you ever, like, that, that, that relief? There's a book about punctuation, called each relief. So if it's, like, a panda bear, each relief, like, each, she, like, she, like, she, like, or. Comes in it, it means something different, but.
Yep.
Like, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was driving back from my school, I just come back and I saw it, and I went, um. You're good. That's fun. Did you travel? Because it's captain. I love it.
There we go.
It's nice, you're in the.
Now I do.
Where were you before? Oh, God, I thought you were in the.
I'm here, I'm here, I'm here, I feel like.
Oh, I, yeah. And now they're gonna be having a, definitely, you know, we have all. Give them up here. Where are they?
Here in here.
Okay.
And so it's right here. Cause like a knife is there. And actually, one of the, when we qualify, it's.
You know? No, okay, I said, does he go to the reception? Reception, then he goes to daycare? Okay. Oh, that's great. I haven't realized, congratulations. Like, there's, oh, last year, last week, can you have?
He started, he started.
Hey.
He started.
That's how we gave it to you, we sit next to them. Which, most. Up the building? Up the building?
There's a lot.
Sure is. You're just not. Or just go out. Oh, wait, thank you, I got one.
I'll shoot there. I am fucking, that's all.
Oh, yeah. I got one.
Your little photo gets the red X on the screen. Let's go to the. Yeah. Right, I asked basically. Taking, expecting.
Yeah, everyone.
Yep.
She carried that.
I check my house.
It's like, how's it, like, he doesn't trust me over there? Like, I didn't already count the three times? Kinda, or? It's not, that was, that was.
Good. So she kept us just her objectives.
This is, talk to your dad for a long time, too. He told me I needed to be nicer. I need to be nicer. I said, you're so comfortable, he said, but she was too. And then he told me, oh, it's.
Yeah, it'll be.
I like chopping, and then he would play, but he doesn't, he can't, but he just has some people that'll stay away from me. We said, I don't have the best time.
Forget all about that. Forget all about that.
It's not too far away. Oh, that's not bad. Well, that's not far away. Okay, we are out of closed session. It is seven, well, it's seven oh four here, it's seven oh two there, so let's go seven oh four. And, uh, let's have a roll call.
Mr. Gentry.
Here.
Mr. Garen.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mr. Quagliano.
Here.
Mrs. Melendi.
Here.
Mrs. Walker.
Here.
Mr. Fleck.
Here. Okay, we have two actions out of, uh, closed session. And please bear with me, I'm, I'm with this part, so. The first item is with respect to student twenty eighteen oh three. Um, I'll make a motion, uh, for the recommendation for student twenty eighteen oh three be expelled for two calendar years. That this expulsion be held in abeyance based on his acceptance, attendance, and successful completion at Evergreen Academy in Union, Illinois. Or placement that District one fifty-eight deems appropriate. If student twenty eighteen oh three is not accepted in Evergreen Academy or violates the terms of his enrollment, then the expulsion be held in abeyance will be withdrawn, and expulsion will go into effect immediately. Uh, if the Board of Education supports the Huntley High School recommendation, student twenty eighteen oh three will be eligible to re-enroll on September twentieth, twenty twenty. During this time of abeyance, student twenty eighteen oh three is not permitted to be on District one fifty-eight grounds. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Quagliano. Uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Quagliano.
Yes.
Mr. Fleck.
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi.
Yes.
Mr. Garen.
Yes.
Mr. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Okay, second item, student twenty eight, twenty eighteen oh four. I'll make a motion that student twenty eighteen, twenty eighteen oh four, uh, be expelled for two calendar years. It's recommended that this expulsion be held in abeyance based on his acceptance, attendance, and successful completion at Evergreen Academy in Union, Illinois. If student twenty eighteen oh four is not accepted at Evergreen Academy or violates the terms of his enrollment, then the expulsion held in abeyance will be withdrawn, and expulsion will go into effect immediately. If the Board of Education supports the high school administration recommendation, student twenty eighteen oh four would be eligible to re-enroll on September twentieth, twenty twenty. During this time of abeyance, student twenty eighteen oh four is not permitted to be on District one fifty-eight grounds. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Quagliano. Let's have a roll call.
Mr. Troy.
I'm gonna vote no, only because I don't believe this is harsh enough.
Mrs. Melendi.
Yes.
Mr. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker. Mr. Garen.
Yes.
Mr. Fleck.
Yes.
Uh, yes, okay, and that motion carries. Okay, yeah, sorry, I didn't have my microphone on. Okay, uh, I think that's all the items, uh, in closed session. Uh, with that, I believe we will have the Fudge of Allegiance, is Mr. Itting's here.
Oh, good evening, thanks for having us back. This is round two. Um, we're gonna let the kids, kids introduce themselves, and then we'll start the pledge.
My name is Olivia, I'm in second grade, and my teacher is Miss Shafter.
I'm Elizabeth, I'm in second grade, and my teacher is Miss Hollinworth.
My name is Robert, and I'm in second grade, and my teacher is Miss Ladisi.
My name is Hanya, and I'm in fourth grade, and my teacher is Mrs. Marshan.
My name is Megan, and I'm in fifth grade, and my teacher is Miss Martin.
Everybody, please stand.
My name is Trenton, and I'm in kindergarten. And this is Calvin.
I am so sorry, I did not see you there. Okay, so let's, let's stand and face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call it up, you guys are gonna take away the meeting.
So is my on?
Parents, please come on up and take all the pictures you would like. All right, Trenton, I felt so bad that I missed you. You get to be sitting in there with the gavel. Can you show everybody the gavel? There we go. All right, guys, so how is school going so far for you? You've been in for a few months. Thumbs up, we got a thumbs up there, thumbs up? All right, everybody's good, okay. What is the coolest thing that you learned about so far in school this year? Yes?
Um, I think the coolest thing that I learned about in school is math.
Math, good. Yeah, Megan?
The coolest thing I learned about was our plan, was, was our planet studies.
Very nice. Yes.
The thing I learned best was science, because we could do nice projects.
Okay, very good. Trenton?
I learned about learning saying, learning about to say the.
Okay.
I've been learning, the best thing I've been learning is a math test, because it helped me get smarter.
All right, very good. And how about you there behind the computer monitor?
Math.
Oh, math, okay, very good. All right, anybody, what holiday is coming up? Yes?
Halloween.
All right. You guys ready for that?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Um, what are you planning on going as, with your costume? Yes?
Mine's gonna be a unicorn.
Unicorn, okay.
Mine is a ninja turtle.
Oh, a ninja turtle? Very good. Megan?
Mine is an angel.
Ah, nice. Anyone else? Yes?
Mine's Master Chief.
Master Chief, okay. Excellent. Anyone else? Yeah, sure.
Um, like a dead unicorn.
Okay. That is very specific. Okay, um, okay, just one last quick question. Pumpkin carving, funny or scary?
Scary.
Scary.
Funny. Scary. Funny. Funny.
Okay, kinda split down the middle there. All right, well, thanks for taking over our meeting for a little bit, and thank you so much for leading us in the pledge. We appreciate it. We're gonna take a picture with you, so stay right there. All right.
Good job, guys!
So thanks a lot, buddy.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Have a good rest of the week.
You're welcome.
Okay. Try and figure that out. Okay? Okay. I'm slightly concerned about the dead unicorn, but we'll move on nonetheless. Mr. Armstrong, is there any public comment?
I see none.
Okay, there being none, we'll skip number five. Moving on to revision and adoption of the agenda. Do we have, Ms. Lombard, do you have a report? Okay. See, this is where I gotta write down the numbers. Don't look behind the curtain. Okay, I see Dr. Slichter has a report, very good. Uh, Ms. Rautmeyer? Okay. Uh, Mr. Zare?
No.
Okay. Dr. Bzinski? Uh, okay. Uh, we do have, Mr. Armstrong, looks like you have something. Dr. Rowe has something. Uh, I don't have anything on, uh, no, I'm gonna have something on 14, so, okay. With that, I will make a motion to revise and adopt the agenda with the removal of items number seven, nine, 10, and 11. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Troy. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Remember what we scratched off here, so that gets us, I think, to number eight. Dr. Slichter?
Thank you. So I just wanted to take a chance tonight to update the board, because there is a lot gonna be happening with communication about this report card between now and our next meeting. So at our next meeting, what our plan is, is to update you. We should, we should have the final version of the public report card released on October 31st, so happy Halloween. And then on November 1st, we have our Committee of the Whole, and so we'll be doing an update at that time. Obviously, you know, there might not be a super detailed memo ahead of time, because we won't have seen it at that point. But nevertheless, we do have kind of a, as you see in the attachment, there's a timeline that the state has released for communication. I will tell you, this has already changed, because they're having trouble managing the data release at this time. So you can sort of see where we are in the timeline. Two days ago, the state opened a login accessible portal where we could see the preview of our report card, which everybody was real excited about. It was actually on Monday, and we actually had the entire internet practically blow up, because everybody was real excited across all the districts, because all these exemplaries and commendables, and all these schools had corrected, and then they let us know that it was wrong partway through the morning. So they've now changed it about three times, because they're having trouble managing the data release. They've now zeroed it out. So when we go in now to the portal, it looks like there is no designation. So right now, you know, we are still proceeding with caution along the same information we gave you before, which is that we don't expect our schools' designations to have changed. But it sure was great to see the way it looked before, so you know, maybe that will have corrected, in which case we'll have great news. But either way, we have some good plans for improvement. They were planning, if you see on the 17th, to release, I don't know if any of you recall, the PDF versions that we used to post on, on the website. They've let us know that those are not even close to being done, because they're so busy trying to correct. They've got quite a bit incorrect in the online portal right now. They've got Mr. Itting's working in our district for only six years. They've got, you know, Mr. Bealan being at the high school for a pretty long time. So even just small mistakes, but we're trying to work with them to correct those, as well as the larger mistakes around the data. So we don't really have an indication yet, despite this. But you also see, and this is what I wanted to let you know, that they do have some media calls and some media releases scheduled. And so we're working with Mr. Armstrong. Typically, what happens with this data, and this happened with Park, it happened with, it happens with anything, what they'll do is they'll release it to the media and embargo it, and it's usually for about a week. They usually release it to us the same day they release it to the media, in which case we get calls about five minutes after we receive it and ask for comment, and we usually have to take some time to process it. It's, it's really uncertain to me and to really any of us that are monitoring what they'll be releasing or sharing with the media, since some of it, they're still having trouble getting into a finished format. So I think some of these dates are probably subject to change, but I wanted to make you aware, if you start to hear buzzings, if you start to see news reports, we absolutely will be keeping you informed, and we can certainly email if something changes to keep you up to the minute. What I do think is, I guess, a little bit disconcerting, but also kinda, I guess, has to make you smile, is that they have told us that if the online portal does not update appropriately, for sure by October 30th, they're gonna send us a paper letter to let us know our designations, which will then be publicly live on the 31st. So we may be up to the minute in terms of what we're able to, to share with the board. I will let you know that, like I mentioned before, a lot of our professional organizations, lobbying groups, are very much on top of this. So tomorrow, I'll be spending the majority of my day with our Chicago-area Curriculum Directors Group over in Maine Township High School District. We do have the Deputy Superintendent from ISB who's going to be with us for the, the majority of the day to do question and answer. There's some statewide question and answer sessions, so I'll be heading to Melrose Park next week. Try to catch those. We really have just been taking a, an approach, it's not a real efficient approach, but it's really the best one out there, of just sitting on every webinar, being at every event, and just trying to gather as much information as possible. Tends to come out in little drips and drops, and you kinda put the picture together yourself. And so I think districts, I think the good thing is our districts are all working together across the state to band together and try to keep each other informed and keep each other up to the minute. A lot of good collaboration going on, and we will continue to keep all of our boards updated the best we can. So as of right now, our intention, we, we should see some public information on October 31st, which is the day before our next Committee of the Whole, and then we would give a report at the Committee of the Whole. And we also plan to do a little bit more information about our data at that point, pending, obviously, what is, what is able to be final. So just wanted to give you that update, since a lot's gonna happen between now and the next time we see you, and I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
If we could figure it out, we'd have questions, but...
That's, you know, that's, that's about right. What I will say is that's actually a huge benefit of being able to collaborate with the other districts so closely, because when you're in a room with 50 high-achieving districts from northern Illinois, somebody's got the right question, right? And so we get to hear the questions other people ask. It's, um, you know, we kind of go through this process a little bit every time we have new processes from the state or procedures. I'm thinking back to the beginning of No Child Left Behind, and everybody was scrambling to figure it out. And so I feel like it just kinda behooves us. We, we, we stay abreast of it, we're as proactive as we can be, and, and then we respond if we have to, and just kind of all take a deep breath and do what we need to do for kids and keep on top of it. So that's kind of the way that our department and our district's been approaching it, and we'll just keep you informed.
Yeah, I, you know, I remember last time you kinda mentioned that it seemed like other states didn't seem to be having the difficulty that our state is having with this, and is that kinda the same thing here?
I think there is, because of the level of complexity of what they've built. In a, in a way, I, I do think it came from a good place, where they were trying to build a system that was more indicative of actual student achievement, and they ended up building something complicated that I think they've been a little bit having trouble managing. So, yeah, the other states, really, it's a lot more straightforward. Some would argue, maybe it's a little bit less comprehensive, but it is more straightforward.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. Well, thank you very much. Uh, moving on, I think we jumped down to number 12, which is Community Relations and Student Outreach. Mr. Armstrong? You have the full report. I'd be happy to take any questions. Okay, that's pretty straightforward. Any questions on that? All right, and there we go. Thank you. Brings us to the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Rowe?
As I mentioned last month, Huntley 158 was readmitted into the League of Innovative Schools. Last week, Dr. Bzinski and I had the opportunity to attend the, the Fall Convening and be formally inducted into this very prestigious and exclusive collection of 102 school districts nationwide that are leading the nation in innovation. And at the, at the onset, we were extremely proud to be included in this group. However, I don't thi, I don't believe we fully understood what we were gonna be able to gain from this organization until we attended the conference last week. And what's, each school district that's a member of, of this league is responsible for participating in a, in at least one collaborative. And these collaboratives are seeking to solve the problems that face education across this nation. And our participation in these collaboratives of, for instance, Mr. Dr. Bzinski is involved in the data interoperability, seeking to, to find a solution to connect all of the different data portals that we use through assessment, through just student interactive, the gaming the students participate in, the SIS system, to create a common dashboard to give us a better way of making decisions in our students' best interest without having to jump in five, or six, or 50 different online platforms. The collaborative that I joined is competency-based professional development for our educators, seeking ways that our teachers can, can advance their professional learning to bring new skills to the classroom and seek innovative ways to reward them for their work and their learning by helping them move on our salary scale, and that is only applicable locally, to keep our best and brightest in Huntley for their entire career. So I, but I didn't think we really understood how wonderful of, of an opportunity this was going to be, because not only do we have the opportunity to participate in these collaboratives, we get to network with 100 and, 101 other school districts that are doing amazing things that will help us stay at the forefront of innovation for, for years to come. So we're gonna gain a whole lot more from membership of this organization than we originally thought, which makes it even better. So it was a tremendous opportunity and experience for us to be at the conference last week. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Let's have a donations report, I think. 13.1.
I see this is a wonderful, very beautiful and nice spot that Mr. Armstrong has provided for us this evening. Well, Leggie Elementary is the recipient of a $1,000 donation from Walmart Community Grant for books. Leggie Elementary also was a donation of $400 for Rebecca Cottle titles in the library, as well as a $100 donation for Makerspace Materials, as Martin received two $50 gift certificates from Guaranteed Rate for School Supplies, totaling $1,600 this month. If there are any questions, we'd be happy to, to address them.
All right. Well, thank you to those who made those very generous donations. Okay, uh, I, uh, just at the President's Report, I just wanted to remind everybody, of course, the triple I Conference is coming up in about a month, and I think we've gotten some information sent out from Miss Stock. So if you haven't had a chance to look at that and respond, please do. It's always a great opportunity for us to really become better board members through that. And next week, as I did mention at the last meeting, we do have the regional Kishawaki Valley IASB meeting. It happens to be at Randall Oaks, and we are going to be talking about, I wanna get this right, since it's been a year since the evidence-based funding bill was passed, how are we doing with it? So that'll be the topic of conversation. And those are always good to meet with our fellow boards from our region, to meet with our representatives from IASB, and to really get some good information about things that affect us statewide, so. All right, any questions or comments on that? If not, go back to the agenda here. That moves us to the consent items. Before we vote on that, are there any items on the consent agenda that anybody would want to have removed? Okay? Uh, with that, I will make a motion to, to approve the items listed in the consent agenda as listed. Second from Mr. Troy. Okay, let's have a roll call on that.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Guerin?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Under 16, there were no items removed from the consent agenda, so now we move on to our action items. And 17.1, I'll turn it over to Mr. Altmeier.
Thank you very much. Last week, at the Committee of the Whole meeting, I gave the Board of Education an update on the fiscal year 18 financial results, an audit. And here to present officially the audit report, for which you have in your packet, as well as at your place, the freshly bound copy, is Mr. Chris Scallett from Evans, Marshall &amp; Peace to present the June 30th, 2018, District 158 Annual Financial Report.
Welcome.
Welcome, thank you. I always like to start with the district's financial profile score from ISB, because it gives a, a good summary of the...
hard work and continuous improvement within the fiscal department. The district has increased its operating fund balances from $24.3 million in fiscal year 2011 to $38.2 million at the end of fiscal year 2018. This has resulted in a significantly improved cash flow. The district's operating cost per pupil in fiscal year 2018 was $10,570, approximately 21% below, uh, the fiscal year 2017 state average of $13,337. Uh, the district finished the year with an operating surplus of approximately $1.46 million. This was primarily driven by favorability in salaries and benefits. Uh, the district continues to restructure its debt to try to save, uh, its taxpayers' dollars. It's always a pleasure for me to come back to a district that makes it easier for my firm during a very rigorous audit season. Um, at this time, I'll take any questions, uh, relating to the audit.
All right, so the, just the one question I have again, and, you know, it's a qualified opinion, and it's a qualified opinion because of the, uh, retirement calculation being too onerous, right? Is that what that's all about?
Correct. Um, and actually, this year, uh, Gatsby 75, which I think it's a good idea that the district qualifies it, um, the state's actually having problems with the liability that, uh, was issued, um, and now all, uh, school districts besides really, uh, 158 are on extension, and we're waiting for the auditor general, uh, for them to reissue the audit report, so...
It's not worth it.
Yeah, so I mean, it, it really, it, it doesn't matter, per se, so, I mean, everything's okay, except with the, um, disclosure of Gatsby 75, correct?
Yeah, and I might add, you know, the reason we, we ended up doing this years ago was to pay an actuary to come in to help draft that report, to be in compliant with the, you know, the, the post-retirement benefit, uh, language, with several thousand dollars, but, you know, I've talked to several of my other business managers, uh, from neighboring districts, and they're all paying anywhere from $7,000 to $9,000 for this actuarial report, which is essentially driven from state numbers, which right now, the actuary has to go back because they had received incorrect numbers from the state of Illinois. So, and that was also part of that decision we made years ago.
Right, and the bottom-line purpose of that disclosure is to kinda show you what you're at risk, potentially, if the state doesn't, potentially make good on their allegations.
Correct.
Okay, so, that's... Any other questions or comments? I'm looking at the financial guys down, down the rows. Okay?
Down here.
Okay, now I'm looking this way, so... Okay, well, all right. Well, well, with that, first of all, thank you, uh, very much. Um, we appreciate the report. Thank you to Mark Altmeyer and to Debbie for your, and everybody in your department for your incredible hard work in putting this together. Um, the thing that jumps out at me, and I, I want to make sure everybody knows this, um, is those numbers that were repeated. Uh, $10,570 per student, 21% less than the state average of $13,337 per student. That's, we're doing that partly because we have to, and partly because we are being fiscally responsible, but we are not at all sacrificing the quality of education that we're giving in this district. This is the number-one thing that I like to tell people in the community, and that is, uh, very strong and healthy district, and I, I really love hearing that number. So thank you very much. Okay? All right, thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, 17.2, transportation bus purchases.
Uh, we do, we do need to make, I'm sorry, Mr. Fleck, we do need to make a recommendation. Administration is, yeah...
Oh, you know what? I was so excited about my little speech there, I forgot to make a recommendation.
We still want to approve that, exactly. Thank you.
Okay, let's try that again. With that, thank you, Mr. Altmeyer, um, I would like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 18 audit and the AFR as presented.
Second.
Second from Mr. Quagliano? Okay, let's have a roll call.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Okay, now we'll move on to 17.2, transportation bus purchases. Mr. Altmeyer?
Thank you very much. This next item is, uh, is really coming to the Board of Education at this time based on need. Um, you know, in an effort to better serve our, our, our new and existing students with wheelchair needs, uh, we have several new students to the district, uh, that have immediate needs, uh, with, uh, wheelchair school buses, and unfortunately, at this time, um, we don't have enough of those in our fleet to really take care of all the students that we need to take care of. Um, with that, and as a result of that, um, we reached out to our provider, Midwest Transit, um, who we've used for, I think, since I've been here, um, to purchase two used buses and, and in accordance with state code, because these are used vehicles, we do not have to go through the bid process, as we have for several other occasions when we've had to do this. So we are bringing to the board tonight a request to purchase two used buses. Uh, one is an 18-passenger, one is a 21-passenger, both wheelchair, uh, with wheelchair capabilities. Um, and you have all of the specs in front of you, but, uh, having our transportation department review these, uh, buses, um, these are exactly what we need to help not only these existing students that are coming in, but, um, or new students that are coming in, but they will also significantly serve our existing, uh, special ed and general population with wheelchair needs. So we asked that the Board of Education review this and approve this, uh, this evening.
Okay. You have the information in front of you. Is there any questions or comments?
New, by the way, would be approximately, that's not part of the memo, but I figured I'd, I'd let you know. A, a new bus, a new wheelchair bus of an 18 or 21-passenger would approximate $60,000 versus the $45,000 that is being quoted for each one of these buses, so it's approximately a 25% savings per bus. Although these buses are a few years old and have some, some mileage on them, um, they will last in excess of 150,000 to 180,000 miles.
All right. Um, and I'm sorry, did, do these come with any kind of a warranty?
Um, Laura, are you...
Okay. Okay, so, and we've had a chance to kinda look at these particular...
Yeah, and they're general, e- every time we've purchased used vehicles from Midwest Transit in the past, we've never had an issue with them. I think they go through a, um, a screening much like a, you know, a, a pre-approved, you know what I mean, a pre-approved, what's the language I'm looking for here?
Pre-certified.
Pre-certified, yeah, oh, exactly. So they do go through a process with their maintenance department to make sure that they're obviously roadworthy and can pass, uh, pass all tests.
All right. Okay. Okay. Uh, well, with that, um, is there any other questions or comments? Okay. I will, uh, make a motion to approve the purchase of the two wheelchair accessible passenger buses, uh, from, uh, I'm sorry, Midwest Transit Equipment, uh, one, uh, 2016 in the amount of $45,350, the other one, uh, 2016 Chevrolet, for a sales price of $45,900.
Second?
Second from Mr. Garen? Any other comments? Okay, then we'll have a roll call.
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
I think I can move on to the next one. 17.3, supplemental purchase orders and accounts payable. Mr. Altmeyer, is there anything we need to know about this?
Nothing yet.
Okay. Uh, any other questions or comments in this? All right, with that, I will make a, a motion to approve the supplemental purchase orders and supplemental accounts payable in the amounts listed in the agenda.
Second.
Second from Mr. Quagliano. Roll call, please.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, with that, we move on to number 18. Uh, Mr. Armstrong, is there any public comment now?
No, Mr. President.
Okay, very good. With that, I will make a motion to adjourn at 7:41 PM. Second?
Second.
I think that was Mr. Troy with the second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?